Okay, here we go. All right, we're live and ready to start our July 16th, or yeah, 16th Village Board meeting. We will start with the pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks for the flag, Megan.
You're welcome. Thank you to the Memorial Day Parade Committee of 2000 and whatever that I still have it from.
There you go. All right, we'll start tonight's meeting with a public hearing to consider a resolution transferring the sum of $15,513 from the village's water system reserve fund in order to pay for water main break replacements on East Genesee Street. Can I get a reading of proof of publication, Mo?
Okay, notice is hereby given that pursuant to Section 7-706 of the village law and Section 6D of the general municipal laws of the state of New York, and pursuant to resolution of the Village Board of the Village of Baldwensville, adopted July 2nd, 2020, a public hearing will be held by the Village Board at the Village 15 West Genesee Street on the 16th day of July 2020 at 7:30 PM to consider a resolution transferring the sum of $15,513 from the village's water system reserve fund in order to pay for water main break replacements on East Genesee Street. Due to the COVID-19 crises, persons wishing to attend need to contact the village office to obtain a password to view by Zoom video conferencing. Please call the office no later than Thursday, July 16th by 3:00 PM. Communications and writing in relation thereto may be filed with the board or presented at such hearing.
Very good. Did it, we don't have anybody signed on, did anybody call looking for?
No.
Okay.
No one called.
All right, so I will officially just say anyone speaking in favor of the proposal? Anyone speaking against the proposal? Seeing nobody, can I get a motion to adjourn and close the public hearing?
Moved.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Opposed? Carried. I move on to the regular meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the Village Board meeting minutes from July 2nd, 2020?
Moved.
Second.
Any changes, questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Seeing as we have no citizens for comments, we'll move on to trustees' comments. We'll start with Mark.
Oh, okay, I had you on mute, that's not normally my turn to go. I'll stick to the agenda this week. I see you have an exception on the possible, it's not for me, so I don't know, somebody else requested it, but I should be good.
That was just set up in case we needed it.
Okay, thank you.
Move on to Ruth.
Just the agenda's fine with me, thank you.
Okay, Andy?
Just the agenda's fine with me.
Bruce?
The agenda.
Megan?
Just a note to the chief to say thank you to whichever officer happened to be driving down Linus Street last night when I half jumped out in front of their car because there was a dog running out in front of the street when he saw me and I didn't realize the car I was jumping out of in front of was one of the village police cars, but he stopped and the dog was safe and we all went on our merry way.
And all I'll, I'll check with Sergeant Gwen, it was either he or Officer Hardesty, I'll find out which one that was and pass along your comments. I'm glad everybody was safe.
Yeah.
All right, we'll move on to Mike, anything, Mike?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay. Move on to, wait, that's everybody, yep, move on to Mayor's comments, and I do have a couple. The Governor made a couple of announcements the last couple of days, and one of them was a, a new COVID rental assistance program for people who are struggling because of the crisis. This is not intended for Section 8 people, this is people who were able to pay their way before, now they can't. And you go to hcr.ny.gov/RRP. And there's information on how you go about it, you've got two weeks to apply. It gets, the money will get paid to your landlord and you will, you do not have to pay it back, so it's a nice break for somebody who's been struggling and to kind of get you through hopefully till things get a little better, hopefully soon. The Governor also issued a statement today, so I can find the sheet, that no more alcohol to be served in bars unless people are buying food. And I know people went spastic when they saw that and I understand it, but the issue that's been coming up from everything I've heard and read is that people go into bars with masks on and they stand where they're supposed to stand until they've got two or three drinks in them and then all, you know, all reserve goes away. They start ignoring masks when they're supposed, if you're standing having a drink, I guess you're okay drinking it, but if you walk to another part of the building, the mask is supposed to go on, you're supposed to social distance. None of that's happening in bars, that's, I shouldn't say none of that, because there's probably some places where people respect the owner enough, they behave, but, so the idea is now if you want to have a couple of drinks with some friends, you better go and order some fries along with your beer. And I don't think you can get your drink at the bar, I think you have to be sitting at a table. So it's worth, for people who like to go and drink in a bar, it's worth checking to make sure you understand the rules, and they're getting a little stiffer with pines and that type of stuff. Let's see, I did get a, talked to Claude the other day about a couple of things, and one of the things he brought up is the bridge on Canton Street, as you go into Warner's, crosses the thruway, the thruway authority has let the town of Van Buren know, they did this a couple of years ago, backed off, and now they have said that they're no longer going to have a bridge there. They're going to remove that bridge rather than repair it, and if you've ever come down into Warner's on Canton Street, that's probably the steepest hill around, and it's a little scary to think about coming down that hill in the wintertime and having a guardrail waiting for you at the bottom of the hill. So if anybody out there, particularly people in the, in the Van Buren side of the village, but anybody who uses that road to get to Camillus, to Warner's, it's going to present problems for the Warner's Fire Department, it's just past the thruway, to get to somebody who's on Canton Street on the other side of the thruway, they're going to have to go down the Van Buren Road and around type of stuff. A lot of things that don't add up very nicely for that area, so if anybody is affected by that bridge, get a hold, I would get a hold of Assemblyman Magnarelli, he's your guy and he's, has some influence. So, just want to make sure everybody knows that so they don't get surprised. We've got some good news from a, an agency that checks this kind of stuff, which is, I didn't know there was such an agency, but we have done well as far as a rental community. The, our average cost for renters for the year is just under $11,000 and our median income is $75,000. So that ratio is 14.26%, and if it's 30% is like the highest acceptable limit, we're at 14%. So we get a pat on the back as the fourth best community in New York State to rent property and the 30th in the country. So, I don't know that that does us a whole lot, it's just nice to know that, that people can come here and maybe get a place to live and not have it be outrageous. Bad announcement today from the Chamber, the Taste of Baldwensville has been canceled. Not without a lot of teeth gnashing and trying, but as Steve has found out in dealing with our situation on Paper Mill Island and stuff, the bands are not performing, I mean, they've shut down like everybody else has, and so the Taste of Baldwensville people were looking at the fact that they would, they could wait a couple more weeks, but now you're in the beginning of August and now you're, how much time do you have to make plans? So they finally had to put the flame out and postpone and hopefully be able to do it next year. And I know they were, they were not happy because it was, last year was very good, it was a terrific event. You should have received a, a statement on the current status of the water districts that we serve in Lysander. Anna's here, so when it's her turn, if you have questions, you can ask her. We did get a $4,800 kickback from Perma, I don't know if this is typical or if it's related to the COVID and, and less claims going in by people and so, it's just like your car insurance, a lot of people are getting money back, so we got some money back. Let me see here. Just, just for board's sake, the first, municipalities who start January 1st with their budget year, their percentage of levy increase is limited to 1.56%. Not, not very close to 2%. Let me see. We do have an Eagle Scout, I don't know if he's contacted Steve, wants to put up some sort of a sign that reflects the brief history of the village, he's had a couple of different places, he was thinking about one of them being the wall of the restroom at Mercer Park, they told him he had to run, anything that was going to attach to a building or be put in the ground or anything, had to be cleared through the engineer, so he may be getting ahold of you, Steve. And I, some of you know my sister, and she posted a thing on Facebook today of the area by Sheen's where the steps come down from Oswego Street and was garbage all over the ground and the flowers and everything, and, and she's put some time into the flowers, she waters them just about every day, obviously she didn't have to today. It's really frustrating to see the places where garbage is thrown on the ground and people just seem to have no concern, or other people, this isn't their backyard, yeah, the bridge, sometimes you go over the bridge and everything looks nice and neat, I know Bob Thiebold has on a personal mission to keep that cleaned up, but there's times when you go by and there's garbage two feet away from a can. So I just asked the public, think about the fact that, that we have a pretty nice looking village, if it takes you 10 steps to get to a garbage can or four, take those extra steps and know that you're making somebody else's life a little bit better, all right?
I saw her pictures that they, literally the trash was laying next to the garbage can.
Yeah, I mean.
It wasn't even a matter of extra steps.
Yeah, it's just got to be no concern whatsoever for people, and you know, it's their playground, they're going to do what they want. I got a email from the state about the census, and the state response to the census is about 57%. They're now starting the second round and going after the people who haven't responded, so they were asking, could communities let their people know that your community benefits from having people listed, because the more people you have, the higher percentage of money you get when it's divvied up and that type of stuff. So I just sent back a note and said I would post it on our Facebook page and I would mention it at our meeting tonight, and I got a note back saying thank you, as of the 14th, which was Tuesday, Baldwensville has about a 70% response rate way ahead of the rest of the state. So I'm not lecturing people in Baldwensville because obviously we've done better than others, but the census does help when we, when it comes time for appropriations and stuff. So I hope you take time to answer those, if you get a thing in the mail survey, or if you get a phone call, answer it and, and see what you can do. And for, for Mo, I'm going to remind everybody, the election, September 15th, will be at Village Hall. They do have applications for absentee ballots, so you need to get a hold of Village Hall, let them know you want a ballot, they'll get the ballot to you, you send that in, the application, and then you send it in and then you get the ballot when it gets closer to the election. I think that's all I have.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yep.
It might be to Mo, are the people who voted by absentee ballot in March, are those ballots still valid?
Yes, they are still valid.
Okay.
And if they happen to be, and if they happen to still come to the election, obviously just one of their votes will be counted.
Okay.
Very good. Okay, now I gotta find my agenda. Where did I put it? There it is. Okay, move on to department heads. We'll start with our attorney, Bob.
I'll just stick with the agenda.
Court officer's not here, village clerk, Mo?
Well, I was, I was going to mention about the election, so I won't need to do that, and otherwise I'll stick to the agenda.
Okay, very good, thanks, Mo. Treasurer, Anna?
Yes, well, as you mentioned, I have sent out the annual report to the Lysander supervisor regarding the Lysander Water District, and I also sent a copy to Bob and all of the trustees, so hopefully everyone has it, and if anyone has any questions about it, please let me know. The other thing is, everyone should have received their monthly financials finally for March, I'm working away on them, the other thing I just want everyone to be aware of is that I'm working on three or four different projects, and I'm really sorry that I'm still behind, but I'm trying to work on the annual report, I'm also working on the infrastructure report that we need to have in, usually it's in by the end of June, I hope to have it in within the next week or so, so we can get our funds that we have coming to us for the 1920 year, so that's really important, important for me to work on that, and of course I was behind because I couldn't get the year-end figures and I need year-end figures for that, so I'm working on that first and then I'm working on the monthlies in between and the AUD, I'm pretty much working on that exclusively at home, and then I do sneak in on the weekends a little bit and try and do some other things, so I'm working as good, as well as I can and I apologize, and if anyone has questions on things or forgotten something, please let me know and I'll do my best.
Any questions for Anna? All right, thank you, Anna.
You're welcome.
Senior Senator, Ruth?
I just want to let the board know that the lunch program started very successfully this week, Monday was the first day, tomorrow will be our second day, that went very well, smooth, the county came to sort of be present when we did our first one, they were very happy with the way things went, so if the seniors would like to participate in that, they should give us a call for a reservation, it's on Mondays and Fridays at 11:30, it's a drive-up, take-away, but you do need a reservation, so give us a call. Also, the farmer's market coupons are available, the neighborhood advisor is setting up distribution dates and times, so please call the senior center for that as well, and Nancy Sullivan will help you with that, and the number's 315-638-4536. Also, Tai Chi started this week on the grounds and they were very happy, they got lucky and had two beautiful mornings, so they started Tai Chi and that went really well, and our yoga instructor has, with the help of Maureen, our clerk, hosted a Zoom chair yoga class for our folks, and they can go to the village website and link into that. And that's it, unless anybody has any questions.
Very good. Thanks, Ruth. Public Works, Steve?
I would like just to ask Ann if I could get a copy of that report, though, it's for the Lysander Water District, so I'd like to see that.
I'm sorry, Steve, I didn't realize, I forgot you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we haven't gotten one, and I'll take that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and then just to report to the board, we got a couple of community development projects that I'm trying to get off the ground, but I'm telling you, the contracting right now is very difficult. We are, we've got a community development grant for some street crossings, Downer and, Downer and Canton, Downer and Frawley, Tappan and Canton and Tappan and McCary, I just, I can't get materials, we're looking at lights, trying to get some solar lights and we're struggling with that, so that's tough, and then the Canton Woods Flooring Project, a renovation over there, we have removed the asbestos, but I can't get a flooring contractor to react. I've talked to Anadaga Flooring and I've talked to, I think Mo can help me with the pronunciation, I think it's Spazatos? Yeah, okay, Spazatos, and they're doing the flooring for Village Hall, but he said he's interested, but he hasn't called me back yet. I've talked to a few other people, some don't do prevailing wage rate work, I do have an exemption now from the county, we don't have to do any MBE or WBE goals for the flooring because they recognize that we're probably not going to find anyone who would do that, so those two projects, I just can't get off the ground, and we keep working on it, so. We'll keep you informed, now that's it.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Steve, is there any word on sidewalk projects? Well, I spoke with the contractor this week, the problem with the sidewalk contract is that we don't have a contract with anyone to do it, and what we've been doing is just trying to extend the pricing that we had from our previous contractor, well, fortunately they've said that they would extend the price to us. Unfortunately, they're not on a contract, so we don't have any leverage to get them here, and the best he said right now is he could be here in the middle of September and do a handful of work for us and finish it up in the spring. Sidewalks that I would like to do would be Syracuse Street from just, just south of Mildred over to the village town line, I'd like to do the eight residents on Mildred, I'd like to do on West O'Naita Street, there's two properties there that go up to O'Naita Street that don't have sidewalk, I'd like to connect that, down at East Genesee Street, I'd like to do from Point Park down to Spruce Pine Street, and I'd like to do across the chiropractor's office on Smokey Hollow on the corner of Smokey Hollow and Oswego Street. In addition to that, if we had some money available, there's a handful of village locations that I'd like to do some leader sidewalks, primarily providing access to village buildings that don't have any sidewalk. Our Lysander Preserve Booster Pump Station, that guys walk through the snow and mud to get there, I'd like to have a sidewalk there for them, I'd like to have a little parking area, get to both our lift stations at Ellsworth Road and on Marable Street, same thing, in the wintertime, they trudge through snow, it's always muddy, so I'd like to put some leader walks to those facilities, so that's what I would like to do this year, I spoke with the contractor just this week, he says he's booked solid with work for school districts, but he said he could come out probably about middle of September and do as much of that that he can and finish it up in the spring, that's, that's where we are right now.
Okay.
I mean, the other option would be to rebid it and get a contractor in and have a contract that had dates associated with it. I don't think we would get the pricing that, that they're agreeing to, but of course, they're agreeing to a good price but not doing any work.
That's a nice, nice one to try to balance.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else for Steve? All right, move on to police, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor, obviously I've got Officer Marty Knoll next to me here, he is under new business, item A, and I certainly like to comment at that point in time, and I'm sure maybe some of the board would as well. I would, would ask for an executive session, Mr. Mayor, on, just to brief the board on a contractual matter, I don't expect it to take more than five minutes, and also, Mayor, if we could possibly put a new agenda item, agenda item D onto the agenda if possible, to appoint Officer Knoll, is a part-time officer with the department effective August 1st at a rate of $26 an hour, if the board would entertain such a motion, I was talking with, with Marty prior to the meeting and he indicated he'd like to remain on a part-time capacity, we would like that as well, if the board would entertain a motion such as that tonight.
Very good, it's, it's down and done, item D and item E will be executive session.
Very good, and then the last thing, Mary, so we did post on our social media page this week, our Facebook page, the local, local agent Lindsay Liu from Slime Street brought in for each one of our officers, each one of our staff members here, some very nice gift bags and some gift cards to Dunkin' Donuts, they, they thought that bringing a gift card for Dunkin' Donuts to a police station would, would be accepted and they were correct, it was very, very generous of them and very, very nice, and we're very, very appreciative of the support from not only her, but a lot of people in the community as, as I mentioned before, but certainly wanted to, to make mention of that. Unless there's questions, Mayor, I will just stick to the agenda.
Very good, anybody got questions for Mike? All righty, we'll move on to pending business. Can I get a motion adopting a resolution to transfer the sum of $15,513 from the village's water system reserve fund in order to pay for water main break replacements on East Genesee Street? Who?
I'll second it.
Questions, comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. I can hear you, Chief. Item 7, new business, can I get a motion to accept the retirement of Police Officer Martin Knoll from the Baldwensville Police Department effective Thursday, July 30th, 2020?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
I'll make a comment first, I, I just can't tell you, I mean, I'm happy for Marty that he's going to finally get to have time to enjoy life, disappointed for the village that he's in the school, that he's not going to be in the same capacity, I just, Marty, just so you know, I hold you with utmost respect, I just think, anytime I've ever talked to you about an issue going on, you know, I look for you for some insight about what's going on in the department, you've always been straightforward with me, you've never backed away from, you know, tough issues, and I'm, and I'm sure our kids at the school just adore you, look at you as they're here, all a lot of them, so I wish you nothing but the best of fun and, and good times, and I'm glad you're going to, hopefully by item D, you'll be a part-timer for us, so hats off to a great officer, Marty.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Anybody else kind of would like to make a comment?
It's always unfortunate to lose good people, but this is to a good cause, so, so congratulations, Marty, we'll miss you.
And thank you so much, thank you so much for your service, we really appreciate a lot of yours and very steadfast.
It's hard to believe it's come to an end, but, well, sort of.
Mayor, Mayor, if I could just say a few things for, for the public's consumption anyway?
Sure.
You know, for, for those of you that aren't aware, Marty's worked with us for, for 28 years now, prior to that, he served in the United States Army where he was an MP, so his, his, his history of public service and service to the country and the community spans over, over three decades, and, you know, Marty was a two-time Officer of the Year for us here at the department, and he received that award 19 years apart, which I think speaks very well to his commitment to, to community service, his commitment to the policing profession throughout his entire career, and there has been no better, Mayor, you alluded, alluded to it, no better ambassador for the Baldwensville Police Department over the last 12 or 13 years than the man seated righting out to my left. In his role as School Resource Officer, he has impacted a generation of, of students In his role as School Resource Officer, he has impacted a generation of, of students from Baldwinsville who think very highly of, of our organization only because their interaction with, with our department is, has been him and at that school, and the way he's conducted himself, the way he's carried himself. You know, Marty and his wife have, have lived here in the village, they've raised their children here. They've, they've all graduated from school here and it is, it is a bittersweet day for, for the members of the public that aren't aware, Marty and I have known each other since I was in 7th grade and he was in 6th grade and we were in the Chestnut Hill Band together. At, in the Liverpool School District, we played CYO basketball together. So we've known each other a long, long time. And I'm very happy for him that, that he's retiring and and certainly walking out with his, with his head held high and wish him nothing but the best. He and I were talking before the meeting, he's indicated he'd like to, you know, stick around a little bit for part-time and see how that goes, but no matter what happens, the department and the village are a better place because Marty's worked there for the last 28 years.
Absolutely, well said Chief.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a comment?
We will certainly have a, a, a party when, when the time is right. As Marty has said, he's not wearing a mask to his own party, his own retirement party, so hopefully that time will, will come. We will have a walkout ceremony for him on his last day, which will be July 28th. I'll certainly notify the board of the time and place for that, but we're, we'll, I'll get that conveyed to everyone.
I agree. Alrighty, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? With regrets? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, so that's carried. Good luck Mr. Knoll.
Thank you very much. You'll still be seeing me.
He'll work for us part-time unless he gets back in the band, right?
I'm not playing basketball anymore.
Smart about it, the old back, gotta be careful, you're getting up, you're getting up there with, closer to me, be careful. Alright, item B. Can I get a motion to accept the retirement of Brian Trowbridge from the Department of Public Works at a date no later than Friday, July 31st, 2020?
Ooh.
Second.
Comments?
It's another good person that we're losing.
I know, it's a tough one, I mean, you, we, we used to always talk at the paper when people would retire that had been there for a long time and even though you, you didn't necessarily see them as spectacular, they had that great institutional knowledge. They knew when things happened, they knew why they changed. Brian, Brian had a pretty good head for what was going on with water in the village and, you know, when things were installed and where you could shut off and where you couldn't and we're gonna miss him, he's, I'm happy for him that, you know, I know he's physically struggles at times and so maybe this is gonna be really good for him. It's gotta be kind of scary for a lot of people to be working at this time and with the opportunity to retire. Can't, certainly can't hate a guy for that. Anybody else want to make any comments on Brian?
Just double your comment, which you said he's very, he's a very quiet, effective employee. And you can certainly, the position I sit in, you'll appreciate that.
He always had a joke. I mean, he'd come up to me and I think he was gonna tell me something hap, you know, hey, did you, did you know? And I think he's gonna say that there was a water break or something, and then he hit me with a line and I I, I sucker for it almost every time and then realized he was telling me a joke. So he had a good sense of humor and we will certainly miss him. Alright, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Carried. Well, there's a lot of years walking out the door with those two guys, wow. Lot of pressure on whoever gets hired to replace him sometime. Item C, can I get a motion to authorize a village clerk to sign the Windhill Design Website Development Agreement for the development of a new WordPress website at a cost not to exceed $4,800?
Mayor, I'd like to just change that amount, not to exceed $5,000, it was a budgeted item for that dollar amount.
Okay, so we'll change that to 5,000. I saw Andy had a hand up, is that a motion? You're muted.
I'm mute, but I'll second it.
Okay. Alright, so what, what is the, the timeframe on this Maul? I mean, is this something they're gonna do right away?
Yes, as soon as we sign the agreement and send in half the, you know, the estimate, then it's a go.
I would just point out, having reviewed the agreement, that there are some time frames in there too, within 14 days if they don't get the materials they need to begin, then they can they can put you on the back burner. And then if they don't get all the materials that they need within 45 days, they can call the balance of the contract due and payable, so. I, I would just would suggest that, that we start the clock running when we have a real good idea of what it is they want and that we are able to provide to them.
Okay, makes sense.
Yeah, the other question, the other question I have Maul is that one of the, one of the things, I mean, I have no problems with the contract as it is worded. There is a, with respect to any copyright or other rights, the village is stating basically that, and they're indemnifying them with respect to the copyright or any other rights for pictures that we give to them. If we are going to be giving them any of the pictures we're currently using, are those, do we have rights to do them? I mean, that's just something I think we should look at.
Yes, I actually have a phone call into Mary Ann Miles who we do, we did receive the copyright rights to the pictures to use, so.
Okay, good.
And then, I also, Mayor looking into some from Linda's calendar, but that's good to know.
And she's, she's checking with some of the people to see if they're okay with them being used that way. And she'll ask for an email that says, is that sufficient Bob, somebody sends an email and says that I give a right to use my pictures?
Sure, that's fine, that's in writing, so.
Okay.
Just make sure you put that, put it in a file and keep it.
Okay.
Okay.
But I've seen, I actually have seen some of their work and it looks, I, I think it's gonna be a tremendous improvement.
Good. Very good, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Carried. Item D. Can I get a motion to appoint Officer Martin Knoll as a part-time Baldwinsville Police Officer effective August 1st at $26 an hour?
Ooh.
Second.
Questions?
Sounds like a good deal.
I used to have, he's not going too far away. Alright, we have a motion.
Field training required.
Yeah, right. Yeah, that's the easy part for the chief, you don't have to train this guy.
Well, so some of the officers might indicate it would be extensive, so we'll, we'll have to see. Marty's, Marty's standing in my doorway indicating he has no comment, so.
That'd be a first.
Yes.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye? Opposed? Carried. Alright, anything else? Any other business that needs to be brought up before we go into executive session?
I just want to ask you, I know we didn't get a chance at the work session, if you had ever sent to Bob regarding the in-person meeting for the public hearing for the other boards?
I did, he commented, I'll send it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And also, you were going to mention something about the video system for Village Hall, have you? We could talk about that tomorrow.
Okay, I'm drawn to both of you, that's all.
For the outside of Village Hall?
Yes, yes, we are talking, the police department has a, is that installed, the camera and the buzzer system, Mike?
Yes Mayor, it's been installed for, for a couple of weeks, I mentioned it the last meeting and we've got some more permanent signage in, in the works.
Okay, well, we are in the process of doing something similar for the village clerk's entrance. In the process, we are replacing the door. It's gonna cost a little more than the door that we originally were gonna use because in order to have a buzzer to let people in and that type of stuff, it has to be a different door. So what was like a $1,500 thing is gonna be closer to 5,000 by the time we get done, right Maul, is that the numbers?
Yeah, close enough, I, yeah, had under budgeted for the door.
Yeah, so, just so you know, the idea being that at some point soon, I'm sure we're going to be told by the state, your numbers are low enough in your area, your doors should, you should be accessible to the public. Well, that doesn't mean we necessarily have to let them just pour in the door, we can see them at the door and make sure they have a mask on and then buzz them in. Or we can say, who are you here to see, we're here to see the court. Cheryl can come up with her mask on and let them in and take them down to the court. So they're not wandering around the building, that type of stuff, so. That's one of our next steps, so. Alright, so we're going to move into executive session, can I get a motion to adjourn into executive session?
Moved. Second.
All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Carried? No action anticipated? Everybody kick off of this meeting and come back on the.